All right, we've got a number of public hearings tonight, so let's open the meeting with 36 Windmill Lane. Lisa.
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening, Lisa.
Zaloga squared, we're ready.
We're ready. Lisa Zaloga, I'm the architect for Shippey's located at 36 Windmill Lane. Ed Armus is the engineer. And so, as you may remember, we were in front of you looking to get a secret determination as you guys took on lead agency. Since that happened, we have had a meeting with the mayor and Steve Phillips to discuss the drainage in the back, because I believe that was kind of the final thing that Lisa Rickmer mentioned at the last meeting. So we had that meeting, then we had a conference call with Lisa, Alex, Wayne, our lawyer, and H2M's engineer to discuss again the drainage. And I believe that it was also sent off by the village to, what is it, L?
L. K. McLean.
L. K. McLean. So I'll let Ed discuss, you know, they had a couple of recommendations that didn't really seem to have anything to do with our septic system. But, in the meantime, we have also been to the zoning board of appeals, and we have also gotten our waiver from the health department. So, we received our waiver today, and we, the only thing left on the list is the secret determination. We also went to the architectural review board, and they have indicated that as soon as you guys and the zoning board of appeals are happy, that they will also be happy with the application. And the zoning board of appeals was also looking for you guys to do SECR. So it's kind of a chicken and an egg thing, and we're desperately looking for SECR.
Yeah.
The ZBA is after SECR.
The ZBA needs you to do SECR, so, because you're lead agency, and then you got, yes.
In timing, the ZBA will lift their right and left hand or leg or whatever after the SECR.
I believe so, yeah.
Thank you.
So I have copies of the plan, if you'd like to see them, and I have copies of our variance determinations and all that kind of stuff as well, if you want me to give them to you, otherwise I can hand them in later.
Do we have the health department, Suffolk County Health? I didn't see that in the file.
That's, I can hand you up a copy, we just got it today.
But they've signed off on everything.
They've signed off on it other than SECR and the office of pollution control, which we're gonna, so yes.
Congratulations. That was a bad, well, that was a process.
So the county and the trustees have dealt with flow? Okay?
So, my next question, Lisa, is have you worked out with the village who's doing what in the parking lot, construction? Because I understand there was some...
We, so I think originally...
Last I heard, there was an agreement.
Right, originally, I think that because we were going to, or we thought we needed so many to buy, to get parking waivers for so many parking spots, that the village thought that the money that we were spending on those parking spots, they could use to improve that area. We have gotten our parking waivers down to four, and so therefore, it was kind of came up that, well, then just put back the grass, because, you know, that money's not gonna work. And we said, no, we'll pay for it and we'll do it. So John Betts is willing to pay and do the work in conjunction with the village, whatever the village engineers want, to put, to build those 10 spots.
So this is what I'm unclear on, because you're saying that your, that John is gonna do, John Betts is gonna do the work in the parking lot?
Is willing to pay for it.
And is willing to pay for it, but who's actually doing the work? Has that been, has that been decided?
Well, it should be, it should be all under Betts, because otherwise it would have to be under a standalone contract that would bid out, because it's municipal work, or it's done privately, and it's just done to the standards of the village and the village highway department.
That's my understanding.
That would be the best way to go on the fastest.
We're not gonna hold up SECR over this, but it doesn't sound like, because I'm still hearing two different stories.
My understanding is that we're doing the work.
Yeah, that's not what I'm hearing, so we need to, Alex, the building inspector is gonna make sure the mayor and the trustees are in agreement with their proposal before anything goes forward on this, right?
Yeah, and the highway department is, it's gonna have to be done to their satisfaction because it's village property.
So you've got that under control? Okay, good. Has everyone?
There's four copies, do you want us to keep them? There's four.
I don't know, I gave you up seven, I think.
Did I have them together?
I thought it was one. I don't need it, you can keep it.
You should have one.
There is a draft, whoever wants these.
I guess we'll take one.
There is a draft resolution of the SECR determination. Anybody on the board have any questions about that?
And Sage, do we have Lisa Rickmers on? Maybe she could...
John Betts is also on.
Okay, maybe Lisa can give us an overview of the draft SECR determination, if that's helpful, or if they answer any questions the board has.
Yeah, if anyone has any questions, I was gonna have Lisa make any comments.
I just got this, but I'm reading quickly.
Read quickly. There's no questions up here. Lisa, do you have any comments about Lisa Rickmer's SECR? Okay, we can see you, Lisa, but I don't know if we can hear you yet.
Okay, I think I can now hear you finally, so I, can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine. I don't know if you heard me ask the question, but do you have any comments about the SECR determination before we close the hearing and vote?
Yes, so I'll just give you a brief synopsis of the findings. So as you recall, the two main issues that were outstanding, that were still environmental concerns at the last meeting, were as the septic and whether they were going to be able to meet the requirements of Suffolk County Department of the Health Services, as well as the parking lot, because, because the nature of these improvements are occurring entirely in the village lot, and it will require significant regrading. The parking lot will be raised about a foot at its highest point, there's the potential for drainage issues, so it was essential that those be resolved before we kind of came to a conclusion on SECR. Based on our last meeting and the work that they've done now, I think that it's because they have removed the apartments upstairs and shown that their flow will not increase, and they are going to get Suffolk County Department Health Services approval for their plan, that will be the mitigation measure to ensure that the septic system is still protective of the environment. And the, as far as the parking lot improvements, we had a bit of, again, that chicken and egg scenario of who's responsible, because they need to do the work in order to put in their septic system, they have to tear up that village lot, remove the catch basin and change the grade, so how are we gonna fix that? And the conclusion was that because it's in the village lot, we would have LKMA, who is currently the village drainage engineer, review and approve the plans. And with those two things done, I think it's fair to say that the potential impacts have been mitigated and a negative declaration is appropriate.
And I'll remind the board, this is also the subject of a pending site plan application, so we're not gonna close the record, but by adopting the SECR determination, it'll allow them to continue to move forward and make progress towards ultimately getting site plan approval as well.
Okay. Thanks, Lisa. Any questions, board members?
There is the Bayville Board on the documents, so that'll be...
I let Lisa know, so we'll correct that, her signature, yes, sorry, there's a typo there.
Yeah, I've already sent the corrected version, so Alex should have it in his inbox.
Thank you.
And John Betts is on, he's watching and he's thankful.
So Ginny and I have a question for you. In the recitals of the draft resolution, there's a, whereas the applicant has met with the village superintendent of public works, do we actually need something specific that he signed off in the record for that? Or do we just go by everybody's word here?
I think you're okay with it, as long as it's subject to, you know, Lisa's recommendations.
Okay.
But I don't have a copy of it, I didn't get a copy of the proposed SECR, so, and I looked on, may I see?
It's on page two, I circled it.
Okay.
No other questions?
No.
So, close the hearing?
No, so we're gonna leave the hearing open, because they're still gonna be able to commit site plan amendments.
Okay.
But if the board wants to adopt the SECR determination, you could do that while leaving the hearing open.
Okay.
And out of curiosity, what else is needed for site plan? Do we know?
I think we are looking for some revisions on the plan, and also the zoning board appeals.
So you need the ZBA before you can...
Yeah, and then, right, so making sure the plans are consistent with that determination.
Right, that's what I sent you to.
Yeah, I asked a timing question, too. Have to, I think, respond to what we get back from the ZBA, we can do a neg deck, I think it's a buzzword.
Yes.
For the ZBA, this is...
Yes, this is critical, yes.
Mark is okay, because they're gonna review it.
It's a good negotiation. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt the negative declaration resolution that we all have in the file, that we've reviewed a second. I'll say, all in favor? Say aye, nay?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
No nays?
No nays.
Lisa, we'll get that signed and sent over to you.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you. I know we've got a lot of first responders here. Alex, is it all right if I do things out of agenda orders?
Sure, that's up to the board.
Yeah, okay, so I'm gonna call next, yeah. Next one I'm gonna open is Village of Southampton and Diamond Communications. Number six. If this is the affidavit, you can give it to Ginny.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Robert Gordioso with the law firm of Snyder &amp; Snyder on behalf of the applicant.
My name is Tom Vineski from Diamond Communications.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you.
The platform is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you may know, this is an application by Diamond Communications on the property owned by the village behind the firehouse. It's for site plan approval, we also require A or B approval, and some variances from the zoning board of appeals. We're scheduled to meet with those boards next week. The application itself is for a 125-foot monopole and an equipment compound at the base. The facility will support the antennas of Motorola, which is the equipment vendor and entity that operates the communications facility for the village's public safety entities, including EMS and fire. The facility will also be able to provide service for the police department, as well as, you know, the other entities of the village. So it's a very important project. The project has a little bit of history that I think is important. The village put out a request for proposal, and there were numerous responses, and after reviewing those bids, Diamond Communications was ultimately selected as the company the village wished to work with. Diamond looked at all of the village properties, some 40-odd properties, they performed studies of the radio frequency analysis to confirm that the facility would solve the communications problems of the village. And ultimately, the village last December agreed to enter into a lease agreement with Diamond Communications on the property that's the subject of this application at 25 Windmill Lane. We submitted a number of documents for your consideration, we submitted obviously the application forms and the fees, we submitted an environmental assessment form, it's my understanding you may decide to be lead agency with a coordinated review. As part of the environmental assessment form, we did two very important things, we performed a cultural resource survey, and our X-ray confirmed that there would be no adverse effect on archaeological or historic resources. We also performed a biological assessment, and we confirmed that there would be no adverse impacts to endanger or threaten species. The one limitation on that is that we cannot cut down trees from December 1st to February 28th, and we should, we should have no problem meeting that requirement. We submitted two different sets of propagation maps to show you how the village propagation would work, how it would cover for the police, fire, and EMS. We also showed you that in the future, if we can get cellular carriers, that that, they would also be able to cover the vast majority of the village from this one site. We submitted a radio frequency exposure report to show that the facility would be completely safe and within the applicable FCC limitations, and we submitted photographs and renderings of what the facility would look like with a worst-case scenario build-out, and you have that in your packet. And finally, we submitted the site plan, which includes fencing and landscaping and a retaining wall on the backside of the property. I'm not sure how familiar you are with it, but it does slope up in the back, the intention is to put the retaining wall on the back, fence it, landscape it, and have the facility tucked in behind the firehouse. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board or the public may have this evening.
Any questions?
I had one regarding the risk category in the documents.
Sure.
You listed as a category two.
Correct.
And there was a figure of 25% as the minimum disaster risk. Can you explain what that means?
Sure, so the risk category two was 130 mile an hour winds, or 50 mile an hour winds with a full ice load. And then what they do is they build into the tower itself, they overbuild the tower 25% above that limit. So the 25% risk factor is actually a buffer, an increase in the structural stability of the tower.
And is that standard, is that, you know...
That's very conservative, I mean, that's going somewhat above and beyond what would typically be done, 25% is quite a bit.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a copy of the site plan you can put out on the table? We can pick it up on the camera.
Sure.
Thank you.
So follow-up, why wouldn't you go 50%? Or what's, what's the problem of even taking it further if you wanted to even...
Well, the tower, so, so one of the, one of the nice things about the, the tower is that all of the cables are inside the tower. And the more you overbuild the tower, the tower starts to get much bigger.
Okay, and then there's that part about if it were to break, about where it would bend and what would happen, is that also better than most?
Yes.
And you took into effect...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, so just, yeah, so elaborate on that.
Alex, is that a good sheet?
Yeah, that's fine, you can have that tracing in the board, they'll be able to pull it up on the screen.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, so, the tower's not designed to fall, obviously, the tower is overdesigned above and beyond, the structural requirements are above and beyond what's required anyway. With that said, the tower, they typically don't just fall over like a tree would. Typically, what would happen is the metal would deflect and the tower would bend on itself. And with the structural letter from Sabre Industries, which is the actual tower manufacturer says, is that they'll, they'll design it so that the theoretical fall zone is actually only 21 feet in distance. So the towers will not fall over like this, it'll buckle on itself, and it'll stay within a 21-foot radius.
Which is contained in your structure?
Which is contained within the property, exactly.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
What's the useful life of one of these towers?
I mean, typically, the leases go for decades, and the towers are very simple structures, galvanized steel, they're maintained, they're inspected on an antsy schedule, so, I mean, I've seen towers well over 50 years with no problems whatsoever.
Yeah, there's probably a lot of history to the lease and what's been done. This board was asked to approve a tower some years ago. I don't know quite, like, five years, six years, five years or something, it was over by the railroad tracks.
Okay.
This, this tower obviously has lots of advantage, the system, everything's generically different, stronger, better, all that, generically the same.
Yes.
Is it appropriate for us to hear what's to the other tower? Is it, is it too short, too fat, too, the wrong place, doesn't, does anybody resident, nobody provides the signals, what's opposed to the EMT and everything?
So a couple, a couple things, yeah, a couple things, there's two...
Round lane, the history.
Sure, two, two functions of these types of systems. One is coverage and one is capacity. Being in the right spot to cover the entire village with the least amount of facilities is best.
Yep.
So what we did is we submitted, we submitted a map that shows, particularly from the Motorola system, how the, how the village is covered.
It's about two miles roughly.
Yeah, from end to end, and one of the biggest things is getting down to the beach, right? So that's a, that's a, if I'm in my boat out off the beach, that's another, that's another bonus, right? And then the second thing is capacity. Once Memorial Day hits, you know, these systems can only handle a certain amount of capacity. And as we know, during the high season, and really even almost year-round now, more than ever since COVID particularly, but particularly from Memorial Day on, the capacity is, is just overwhelming. And because the system is based on licensed frequencies that can only handle a certain capacity, you need more facilities, just like you need more roads to handle more cars.
I assume it is better, but it's, in addition, I'm asking the question, is it's outlate the capacity of sufficient increment to about a mile, it's slightly east, and about, it's probably a mile further near the beach than the old one?
Yes, it, it does fill in that area, and the same carriers that are using that tower would use this tower. And one thing that we normally like to say as well is, when that tower was built and designed, many people used their phones in their cars, they would travel from site to site to site. Now, most people stay in one spot, and they don't move, and they use very data-intensive uses on their phone, and so that draws all the extra capacity, because they're not moving on to the next site and offloading that, that site. So that's one of the reasons why this is for that, but this is primarily for the public safety function, because there is a gap in their coverage as well, to be able to bridge that, and that's what we're trying to do.
Does the old tower also continue to work? Does your signal...
Oh, absolutely.
Park a mine, you know?
It does, and I think, sorry to interrupt.
You know, no, no, what's, what's the difference of the old tower, it doesn't fall over?
No, that, that was designed under the same standards as, as this one is, so...
The carriers will continue in both?
Yes, they're not leaving that tower, they're, they're supplementing.
Thank you.
Couple of questions, just in terms of scale, this tower's 125 feet, you said.
Correct.
The tower that's up by the 711, what's the height of that one, do you know? So, is that...
I don't know off the top of my head, I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna guess.
Okay.
This is in the ballpark of most telecommunications towers of this, of this ilk, usually 150 feet. Radio towers are much taller, at 125, this is a relatively lower height tower, to be able to support particularly all the carriers and the Motorola equipment.
Got it. So I'm going through the site plan and the drawings here, and I had some questions, I'm on C2.
Yes.
Along the left side property, existing property line?
Yes.
There is a kind of gray line that extends over the property line there, is that existing? Is that proposed? I don't see a label, what is that?
The gray line? Could I, could I come up?
What is that little box right there?
Could I just come up and just double-check, because I'm not getting...
I think that's the existing curb line.
What is this?
I think Tom's right, I think that's the curb line. That's unrelated tower facility?
So that's existing?
Yes.
Correct. And then, I'm trying to get a perspective of sort of what it's gonna look like back there, after the tower goes up and all the retaining wall and landscaping's done, so if I go to, it's toward the back.
If you go to the color page, that might help. Go to C0?
Yeah.
So if you walk to the rear of the property, you'll see an existing shed, and you'll see an existing fire pit. So that shed will come out, and the fire pit will also come out.
Yeah, I have my glasses on, and I still don't see it, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
The little circle there is the tower, I'm assuming, right?
Yes, on the left-hand side.
And the fire pit and, which is where relative to that?
So the, the existing shed is right next to that little circle.
Okay.
And that's used for storage of equipment for the fire department. And then the fire pit is further to the right, it would be under the 104 number?
Right, and that's, all that stays or goes?
No, that goes, we, we're taking all of that out, and then cutting into the hillside and putting a wall up to enable us to have the additional space without impringing into the parking lot.
Which line would be the wall on this?
The dark black line.
It goes from the 7:38, 7 seconds to 104, that dark line?
Yeah.
Yes.
To 104.
It's three-sided.
Okay, and when I look at... Black left of, of Southampton.
Yep. C2.
Look at C5. Am I looking... Which elevation is that, north?
That's from the side, that would be from the side of the property.
I'm standing on the southern border, looking north?
That'd be west, looking east, right?
East is toward Windmill Lane.
It's, is from the southern side looking north, because that, the pole is closest to the southern property line.
Okay, so the height of the retaining wall is... Are these scaled? These are, I can never tell whether these are scaled drawings when we get them cut.
This one is not scaled, this one is not scaled.
Because that's a pretty steep hill there, so the retaining wall goes to, cuts in the hill, but then this shows a flat spot, but isn't that pretty steep there? So how does, I mean, that's why I'm having trouble getting perspective of what that's going.
Right, so, right now, on, right behind the shed, it's a very steep bank, as you noted, then on top of that, it does flatten out as it heads towards the movie theater parking lot.
Yeah.
And there's some scrub up top on there. So this will be cutting into that hillside and reinforcing it, that wall will be either a mix of landscape blocks or concrete, they just did the geotech investigation to determine the soils underneath about two weeks ago.
Yeah.
So that engineering drawing is gonna be generated for what's gonna be needed to reinforce that wall behind.
Okay.
But that will, the idea is to gain the space in the rear, but stabilize it so that it matches the, the grade up the top. And then there's additional landscaping being placed between, on the top of the area that's currently more scrub pushes, it's gonna be a stricter landscaping to reinforce that from the movie theater parking lot looking towards the site.
That landscaping is TBD at this point?
Junipers, I think we specified the junipers on the plans.
I think it's juniper evergreen.
Yeah, nine, nine, I think we specified nine of the nine junipers, 15-foot on center.
So, you know, in one drawing, it says there are four to six-foot junipers.
Four, four to six-foot, correct.
Yeah, they look a lot taller than that on this one, so, you know, we're just trying to...
Understand.
Get an idea of what it's gonna look like back there, and it's really hard to get that from these drawings.
You want a better scale of the elevation.
It would be helpful, you know, the color drawing that you did, if you kind of zoomed, what I can recommend, right?
Yeah.
Just to make it clear, so we can move this along as quickly as possible, is to just zero in on the firehouse there in the parking lot, everybody's very familiar with what's around it.
Understood.
And just shows exactly when it, it's all done?
Yeah.
What that's gonna look like. I mean, it's clear what the site plan is, but that's only part of...
You told him more of an elevation drawing.
Yeah, that's only part of the decision, is not only site plan, but, you know, how's it gonna look?
Understood.
Okay.
It's tucked in to the southwest corner of the lot, there's somebody to the movie theater parking, some below other people.
Yeah.
And, you know, unbelong, where the original windmill was, that was the mill hill, as in Hill Street.
Mm-hmm.
And that's it, and this is down there, and it's gonna go up next to it, so people need visibility, it's, it's new, it hasn't been there ever.
Sure.
So if it's digitally, you can do a lot.
Yep.
And I'll bet, I'll bet somebody has an architect who can do it.
Yep.
Okay.
If you look at the original packet, there are renderings, digital... If you look at the original packet, there are renderings, digital renderings.
Yeah.
I think you're focused on the compound.
Compound of landscape.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
The original flag, flag lock of a fire engine.
Yeah.
It's tucked in.
Yep.
A little side tucked in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All kinds of opinions on the visual aesthetic here, but you know, my first question to people as well, you know, name in the village where the other one is.
Yeah.
Nobody, right? That's why I was just curious how this one.
Yeah, good point.
So, you know, nobody really notices that one unless you're looking for it.
Yeah.
You know, as an exercise in finding, so.
Very true.
That, that's why I was, just how it compares to that one. Any other questions?
I was just curious, looking at this, which is very helpful. Sometimes you see these things with greenery, fake greenery, whatever. Is there a reason or not that they're not, that you're not doing any kind of disguise other than on the ground level when you're walking?
We, we actually did do a rendering of a tree. And when we were doing the leasing process, we had gone through that with the village and the village representatives, and they felt that a tree would not be, not work in that location.
Okay, so this is what they prefer?
Yes.
But my understanding is when you disguise it as a tree, it also reduces the effectiveness of the antennas. Is that?
Not, not with a tree. With a flagpole, it does because you're, you have to use different antennas. They tend to overheat. Trees are preferred stealthing because you can still get the diversity of antennas.
So when you put all the fake greenery on it?
It doesn't change the signal that much.
Got it.
But that's, decision's already been made?
It has.
Yeah. No other questions here?
Sorry to interject. The other issue is the Motorola whips on top, sorry, the small round antennas that Motorola placed on the top. They would stick out at the top of the tree if the tree was placed. That was one of the reasons.
It doesn't really, it's not an effective.
Defies the purpose of the stealth.
Okay, thank you for the.
Disguise of the tree was even worse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other people?
This is a plan.
Like to comment on, on this?
And we also have Lisa on who provided the staff report that just came in today. So I know the board hasn't had an opportunity to digest it fully, but you have that available and they provided copies to the applicant as well.
Lisa Rickmers?
Yes.
So we'll become lead on this.
Right. So that's probably the decision point for tonight is once you hear from the public, the board should consider declaring themselves lead agency for a coordinated review. And then we would let the other boards know.
In the interest of time, I'm going to, since we're going to leave the hearing open, I'm going to have everyone read what Lisa wrote. Rather than Lisa give us, we can read about it. Do you want to hear it from Lisa or just read about it? Her staff report on this. Okay, Lisa.
Okay, I'm happy to discuss quickly. In general, I would just say that I think it's a great project. It's placed in a good location. But I did want to comb through very carefully the code and the exact requirements of the village code. So that's what this staff report does. It provides everything that is required by the code that be in the staff report. And any item that is missing as required document is highlighted here. As terms of seeker, as we've already discussed, if this is an unlisted action, I'm recommending that planning board declare themselves lead agency, initiate a coordinated review, just to simplify the process so that decisions don't have to be then made at like the zoning board or any other agency that, that has to make a decision. As far as the details of the, the projects, the, you'll note that, that I, one thing I highlighted in the memo is that there is one criteria where it does not clear in terms of the avoidance area. This is, that is within 500 feet of historic resources and historic district. That said, it's impossible to be in downtown Village of Southampton without being within 500 feet of the historic district and historic resources. We believe that the code is worded that it should be located, which is advisory, meaning that, you know, if it's not possible, you can consider other locations. And this location is actually outside of the historic district and is, you know, is, is not a direct impact in, in that way. So I just wanted to highlight that for you because I did provide some details on that in the memo. You know, the, as far as the, there were a few details that I would, I think the planning board would like to see, especially related to the retaining wall, which is proposed to be eight feet in height. And we don't really have a construction detail on that. We also don't have any information on drainage. And there is a proposed increase in impervious surface. So whether that can be handled by existing onsite, you know, drainage infrastructure, or if something is proposed, I think that would be of the purview of the planning board to consider. In particular with the retaining walls, when they're that tall, they generally need like some support structures that go into the hill, which might mean additional clearing and understanding exactly how far and how depth deep that site will be cleared and where those structural elements will be placed would be helpful. If you have any specific questions, I, I did try to at the very end of this memo summarize all the items that were either like small corrections or items that might, were missing, the planning board would like to see. I believe most of them were prepared, including like, I know that there was a lot of research done on alternative siting, which is requirement of the code. But there was just nothing provided to explain that. So I think it's, most of this has been done. It's more of a technicality to see what that information is.
Okay, great. Thanks, Lisa.
You're welcome.
So I'm going to motion that the planning board become lead agency in a coordinated review on this, right?
As an unlisted action.
As an unlisted action. Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
No negatives?
No negatives. Any other public comment on the towers? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Will this be on for the June agenda? Would that be the?
Is that when you'd like to have it? Next June 2nd, I think it is?
There, there is a meeting on, on May 19th, if you'd like to continue at that date, unless you feel like you need a further adjournment.
What's the deadline for the materials?
Typically, the, we would ask for them to be the Tuesday prior, just so we can distribute them to the board. And I'll have much review we'd be able to do before then, but we would try and expedite it to the extent we can.
Okay. So let's do the, let's do the May 19th.
Okay. And if you need more time, I can adjourn it.
Great. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So thanks so much. So is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing to continue on May 19?
I'll move the adjournment of the public hearing. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Yeah, Alex, there is some question of whether we'll be able to do a meeting on the 19th.
Okay.
Decide at the end of the meeting.
Okay. If not, they'll, they'll carry on to the next meeting.
It's going to fly on back for the 19th. Okay. Let's see. Let's go to East End Holdings, 3840 42 Jobbs Lane.
Evening. My name is John Bennett and I represent the Kennedy to Jobbs Lane. I represent the applicant. This is not a site plan review in front of you. This is merely rearranging these lot lines so that they make sense. I don't think there's any question but that what we're proposing here is re-planning.
Facing you. Yep. Thank you.
So, because I noticed in the Dropbox, there were some letters that all deal with site plan issues, which is we're going to file a site plan application and a public hearing on that, no doubt. So I don't want to get bogged down with that stuff. So the applicant's proposing to modify the lot lines between three existing parcels, 3840, 42 Jobbs Lane. Many, many years ago, there was a home on this center property, which is why you have this very, very strange gerrymandering of these lots. I remember this was, even as a child, I thought it was rather unusual that there was actually single family residents on Jobbs Lane. All, all shopping, but there's a single family residence there. So that's why these lots were created that way. So now we're proposing, we're not proposing, we're proposing demolish every, every improvement on the property. And the ARB did on April 28th, right? April 28th for the record. The ARB did allow the demolition of all the properties on the, all buildings on the property. I handed you a copy of the, of the approved resolution, which is unanimous. So that's what's going to happen there. All of these buildings are going to be removed. And we've proposed new buildings. We should be filing a site plan application in relatively short order, but we have to stage this the right way. Modify these lots to make sense that we'll have three lots of about a little bit more than 22 feet each. And we provided a fifth, five foot walkway, which is actually, as we saw, seeing back and forth, we'll show that as a separate lot. So it can either be burdened by an easement or subject to, subject to dedication. I just wanted to bring out section. I'm sorry. By the way, CMX Sammy is here with me, as is Bailey Larkin. CMX, as you know, is the project architect that has been part and parcel of design, not only the proposed improvements, but this lot design. But section 116. Let me make sure it's right. 14K said that shared alleyways for pedestrian and vehicle traffic to connect public suit to parking areas, supposed to be five feet. Follow the code on that five feet. And anything larger, again, makes these relatively narrow the lots even more problematic, or more problematic. You'll recall that there is no minimum lot size in the village business district. I mean, these lots exist already. We're modifying. There is, there is no minimum lot size. There's no, you could have a zero lot line setback, but that of course would not happen on these, particularly on the lot to the, I guess that's the east, the easty of the lots. So we're providing for that five foot walkway. So we were, so this, this, this is again, this is, this is, there's no, you're not looking at any proposed buildings here. In terms of improvements, from an informational point of view, again, I handed up the unanimous resolution of approval from the architectural review board to take down what had been characterized as these modern buildings, because that's what they are. They're modern buildings. There's nothing historic here of any nature. Doesn't mean any, it's not a contributing structure. It never was designated a contributing structure. These couldn't be. These are 1970s buildings, which don't have any of the requirements. I, I, I tell you that to make anything historic. And, and that clearly is why the architectural review board unanimously got the approval to demolish all these buildings. So again, we did provide this walkway. It may very well be dedicated, as I'm sure you're aware of. You can't require a dedication, but clearly at minimum, we'll put an easement there. It may very well dedicate it. But that will be subject to further discussion on the site plan application. The, so I don't know how far you want me to go. I do have some comments to the Southampton Association's letter, but I don't know that they're appropriate to comment on at this point, as opposed to that the site plan review process.
John, when, when was the house going down? When did this start?
Oh, the 70s, the 70s. Yeah. I think the Phillips family and Tom Burke did this.
Yeah. The timing, is it early 70s?
Mid, mid 70s, maybe. Early, mid 70s.
After the OPEC date.
After the date, that's fantastic. That's pretty good. No, I know. I'm just starting, catching anything pre-posed OPEC. That's pretty good. Yeah, it was, it was after that, I would say. I'm sure of that.
Love to know the date of the demolition and that. This took place, a lot of stuff took place at that date.
Yes.
Village, under the building commissioner, under property values.
Yep.
Extraordinary changes. The date of all this occurring is possibly relevant.
In what manner, Alan?
Timing.
I still don't see the, I'm trying to respond because the only time you would have an issue of.
The arguments of the community, the balance of decision dealing with the, I'll say, the artwork of beloved Jobbs Lane.
Alan, that ship has sailed. The ARB voted to allow the, to take it down.
I'm not arguing.
Okay.
It's relevant as to the county. It'd be nice to know the timing, but we can research it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll provide that for you on the site plan application, but it doesn't have any bearing on this.
Thank you.
I mean, you have a clean slate here now, so I'm just trying to, I don't think there can be any argument, but these, from a planning point of view, make more sense. And just before I forget, on a secret point of view, this is a type two action. I'll give you, I'll give you the chapter and verse on that. Just took a shot of it in my camera. Hold on one second. Sorry. Why is this thing doing this? It's, I'm just going to give you the chapter and verse on it. Title six, section 6175, type two actions and give me two seconds. I thought I had this right here. Subject category 16 is lot line adjustments.
That's why it's type two, not unlisted?
Yes, type two action. So again, I'm here to answer questions, if you'd like, about what's going to go there.
Before you.
But I think it's premature.
Yeah. Before you, 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 early on in your comments, you said that code, five feet wide.
Oh, yeah.
I looked in the code and I couldn't find anything. Can you point that out for me?
I was happy that the drafter of it, who was on the planning committee.
He wrote it.
He wrote it. And I have my questions as to from whether or not a constitutional point of view, this is important. One could require that because there's no access there now, but we're willing to offer it.
Yeah, sorry.
That's a good thing. Because there's no access to the back before. And I can talk about how much more conformity with the code, our proposed site plan will, what will deliver to the village. But again, I don't, I think that's all premature. We're going to have a full blown public hearing on that.
That's why I asked you to start a question. I withdraw it.
Okay.
Well, I'll do it. Ask it again.
Perfect. Ask it at the site.
I'll ask it again.
But all of those, you know, the, the letter starts with, you know, this is a beautiful, one of the most beautiful shopping districts in, in the country. We agree. We want to work with this board to continue. These, these have been, it's been really unfortunate. This has been a retail dead end other than the, the buildings up front. So. And the buildings that you're going to see are going to be much more in conformity. They're going to be 75 feet deep, which these are not. They're going to conform to the width requirements. You're going to have parking in the back where there is none. It's going to be, I think it's going to be great.
Yeah, I don't want to get too far.
Yeah, no, 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 no. Yeah.
At this point, Alex or Janine, we need to designate.
At this point, Alex or Janine, we need to designate lead agency.
Not for a type-two.
Not for a type-two.
Not for a type-two.
Okay, so...
So the board can hear from the public, because this is a public hearing, on the lot line amendment, not on site plan. And if the board has enough information, you could close the hearing and then ask counsel to prepare a written decision for the following meeting.
Understood, okay, thank you, John.
I'll just reserve anything in case I hear it, but again, if I may, the comment should be limited to lot line modification.
Understood.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this? Because we have a lot of letters to the board on this, but any, anyone here tonight want to talk about this? All right, so a motion to close the hearing on this.
I saw this one.
Yeah, a motion to close the hearing on this lot line amendment, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any negatives?
No.
No nays.
No nays. Janine, do you have what you need to prepare a written decision?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll address that at the next meeting.
Thank you. John, I'm going to get this back to you.
All right. John, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go to...
June the second, right?
If not, May nineteenth.
But, you know, it's the last of the public hearings, because I've got to step out for that. Let's go to East Endo, I'm sorry, let's go to Bridgehampton Realty.
Did you adjourn or, or, did you adjourn Fowler?
It's number three.
We will, we'll vote on that, we have to.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry.
It's, it's, June, you want that June meeting, right? Here's what I have notes for.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're giving you as much information as we can on that.
Yeah.
As a question, I think it was June second.
Yeah.
I'll move it, be adjourned to June second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, John. Welcome back.
CEO, the architect, and the architect for this job, and this is the owner, Chris Branside. Last time, the board asked me to put in the setbacks and the house and the driveway and the septic system, which I did, and then we did the common driveway in the front, just one, and then we put planting on both sides, and then, like, not very far in, we split into two driveways. And then the setbacks, you know, is based on the size of the lot, so I've lot one, lot two, and lot three, and this one is a small one, it's a different setback. And then the setback for the front and back, I actually marked it, but the side, I didn't write down the exact number on the map, because it's a minimum and total, so it's written. Right now I've split it, but it really should be the minimum and the total.
This is a picture, I didn't see this one in the file, this is the latest drawing, when did this go in the file? This is updated from our last meeting, but I don't remember seeing this, and again, even with my glasses on, I can't see.
Hmm, I believe it was distributed to the board members, let me check the date. And you should also have in the file, there's a letter from the Suffolk County Planning Department about the referral that we did, as well as some notes from the fire marshal. Let me check the date.
It's basically the same map that we gave you, nothing changed, other than we added the driveway and some plantings. No, I was just saying that it's exactly the same, you had asked at the last meeting, that you wanted to do additional things.
It's basically the same as the first meeting, because the last meeting, we did the three lot and four lot, the four lots and five lots comparison, and then we decided that this is what we're going to do, just three lots.
This is the original?
Three lots, and the driveway goes down the center of that arm, and there's landscaping on either side.
Yeah.
Right, right, that's what I remember.
That's exactly what we did.
The first time, the driveway's on one side, and they split, and then the board commented that we should put it in the middle, so we had trees on both sides, it looked prettier that way. And then also, board wants us to do the yield plan, so we did a four lot and a five lot.
Right.
And just to take a look and see what is allowed. I think five lots is allowed by the zoning. And then, and then we did three lots, and then you can see the water line and the gas line, and all being in the middle, and then they split.
Right, but you're going to do three lots, this is the plan.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, three lots.
We're basically just severing off the nineteen-twenty's house, which I just renovated, I don't know if you've passed it, but it's a lot different than what it is. I brought photos, if you wanted to see what was there.
It looks really nice.
You said you were living there.
No, I said I bought it from my mother, and she can't live there, because it's theirs.
It was very poor condition.
My offer still stands, the village should buy it. Happy to sell, happy to sell it.
You're talking to the wrong department.
I think it was filed April twenty-third.
Need me furniture, I got extra furniture, you need any?
Is this lot one? It's just not marked, you're talking about three lots.
Ask the applicant.
I'm just looking at the map, I just see lot two, lot three, is this lot one at the bottom and marked?
Yeah, this is, it's written right here on the corner, on the side.
Lot one is an existing...
Right here.
Oh, I see, it's smaller, it's so much smaller than the one, okay, you've got it, like, this is lot one.
Yeah.
All right, so...
And then it conforms to the current zoning.
I meant the text, the font.
Yeah, it's a little bit smaller, I'll make sure it looks bigger next time.
So lot line modification is a SECR review?
So this is a subdivision, this is sketch plan subdivision.
Okay.
So I believe it would be an unlisted action. Oh, sorry, for sketch plan, we typically save SECR until the preliminary application.
So what do we need to do tonight, then?
So for sketch plan, the board is just coming to a general consensus about the overall layout.
Yeah.
And so if that's a layout that you find acceptable to move to the next stage, you could approve the sketch plan, and then they would have to apply for preliminary or final subdivision, and it's applicable.
So I can close the public hearing, and then we can vote to approve the preliminary sketch plan, is what you're saying?
At the next meeting. Yeah, if the board feels that you have enough information at this point, and there's nothing else you need the applicant to submit, and we've heard from all the public, you can close the hearing.
Yeah. Anybody need more information on this one?
I don't have.
You don't?
No. I would love to see the pictures, if you have it, do you have that?
The house?
Yeah, you had something you were going to show, or something.
Oh, I was just saying, there was an old, there was a nineteen-twenty's house...
That's on lot one.
On lot one, that I just renovated. I'll pull it up, show you, so. This is what it looks like now.
Yeah.
That was a little...
Can you zoom in?
That's what was on the, on lot one, about three months ago. I mean, this is what it looks like now, after three months. I'm just getting the driveway done, I have to put a curb cut in, the pools in, landscaping, and this is what it looked like.
It was, it was in a very bad condition, everything was, like, falling apart, so we took...
I'll show, I'll show.
Totally got run up.
Go get a kick out of it.
Okay.
If I can just make one comment that the board might want to just discuss for a moment, which is the fire marshal's comments, because he highlighted the fact that there's, with the long driveway, a turnaround is required for emergency access vehicles, and I'm not sure, I haven't seen this most recent version of the plan, but from just what I'm seeing on the screen, I'm not sure if this has yet been amended to reflect the turnaround capacity.
Lucy, did you send us the digital version of this? Because I'm not seeing it either.
Yes, it was emailed to Francis and you and the village.
All right, let me, let me look again.
So I did talk to fire marshal, he said, if it is over five hundred feet, if the driveway is over five hundred feet, you do need a turnaround. This total length is five hundred thirty-seven, so I'm going to make sure I don't go past five hundred feet. Yeah, this is not, have not revised, because I just got the comment last week.
Okay. As long as you think that the way it's configured, it can be accommodated, the comment can be addressed?
Yeah, we can address it, we can make sure it's not passing five hundred feet. He said, as long as you don't go past five hundred feet, you just do regular driveway. And this, you can see, the total is five hundred thirty-five, five hundred thirty-seven, and then this part is about sixty feet, so...
Can you put it back up?
So at this point, it's, it's five hundred feet, so as long as I don't make my drive go past that, I will be okay.
Yeah, just draw, just draw.
Do you want, do you want just the driveway on this side?
Just come in and turn it right there.
Okay.
So what we can propose is just coming in and put the driveway on the left-hand side of the house, instead of on the backside. Right, just come in, come down the driveway, turn right there.
If I, I did talk to him, he said, if I just, you know, if I stop here, and then go into the house here, instead of going all the way, turn around, because go all the way, turn around is prettier, because you've got to see the house before you park. So if you just park right here, you never really parade in front of your beautiful house. That's like, that's how we do, we kind of tend to go that way, but if, if the case that we need to be the turnaround, I would just rather just do it in the front, and it'll be finished.
You can make the house face south.
Something back to America.
Just saying.
Yeah, I can also, like, do this way, and then turn right here.
Yeah, as far as that goes, I don't care which direction it goes, I have no intention of...
Something back to America.
I was just like, whatever.
Deals and fires.
Yeah, for sure, we're going to make it less than five hundred feet, it'll work. Yeah, he gave me all the, all the instructions and stuff.
We need to see that done, we need to, like, see it before we...
Yeah, we do, well, so that will come up in the site plan review?
The, you know, the subdivision application.
Yeah, the subdivision application, but I think for purpose of the lot line modification...
The sketch plan approval.
Yeah, okay. Any public comment on this one? Motion to, I'm sorry?
Can you just tell me how wide this is?
Sorry, we need you to say your name on my record, because otherwise we can't record your comment, thank you.
If you step up here, somebody.
Indification.
Nancy Bormuth, I'm a neighbor to the property, and so I'm curious to know how wide is the drive for the five hundred feet going back?
Twenty-five feet wide.
Thirty-five?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five feet wide, okay, that's all, thank you.
Okay, motion to close.
Someone's coming in, okay.
This is, this is, this is the driveway.
The, the splits, I see.
Goes, yeah, okay.
Two access, twenty-five foot down. Almost five access, okay, you can...
Thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Oh, we can't hear you.
You may, your microphone may be on mute, we can see you, but we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I was just, I'm a neighbor also on Willis Street.
Could you state your name, sorry to interrupt, could you state your name, please?
Yes, Eileen Fogarty, and I was just, when I got the certified letter, I gave it to a family member just to read it, and because I have a lot of brush behind my house, and I'm wondering how that impacts, you know, I don't want to see, like, a lot of buildings and houses where there was, if there's all this brush that I have, which is for privacy, and one of my relatives had looked into it a little bit, and he said that there was an ongoing legal case related to the ultimate ownership of the property, so it doesn't make sense to approve anything when the underlying ownership of the property is still unresolved. And it was held by the Supreme Court State of New York, County of Suffolk, by the Honorable James Quinn, and I just wanted someone to explain that to me, so that I feel assured. Ed?
Sure. So I purchased the property...
We just need you to address everything to the board.
I'm the owner, I'm Christopher Burnside. So I purchased the property, came up for sale, I purchased it, Rusty Banks was the title company, there was no issues, I got a mortgage on it. Apparently, the way I understand it, is that there was five siblings, or seven siblings, or something like that, two of them don't even live in this country, they're, you know, saying all of a sudden afterwards that they had a claim to the property, but it's a bogus thing, I mean, I think we, my attorney and the title company put a request to, I guess, just forget about, I guess, whatever they do to get rid of it, but it's, I own it, I mean, I have a mortgage on it, I closed on it, I had two attorneys, title company and a bank attorney were all there, and originally what happened was that this property was taken back by the county, Suffolk County, and then they held it for ten years or something, and so the county owned it, and then, I guess, the siblings, some, a corporation bought it for six hundred thousand and sold it to me for two and a half million, so it's all public record, it's...
The siblings were pre-county ownership?
That's what they are claiming, but once the county takes something back, they hold it for ten years, it's past the statute of limitation, they have plenty of time. And basically what they wanted, they wanted to settle it for like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something ridiculous, and they're just trying to get it just dismissed, so.
Understood.
There's, I own it, I have the deed, I can...
So it was dismissed, then?
Well, it hasn't officially been dismissed, they just had a motion, the title company's handling it, West Core Title, Stephen Grimaldi was my attorney that represented me, and they all said that these things, a lot of times, they're just, everybody's out looking for a handout, but there's no question, I mean, the bank wouldn't have loaned me two hundred dollars to purchase it.
You have a title policy.
And then I have a title company policy, which I can bring in, in fact, I could pull it up on my phone, if you don't see it.
When was the closing, Chris?
It's about a year ago.
Okay.
So you own all of that property behind...
Yes.
So you have the right, then, to build whatever you like, right?
Well, you know, in all, you know, since it's a public hearing, I approached, I originally bought the property because I thought it would be a good place for me to put my mother in the little house, I'd renovate it, and then sell the other parcel to the village and the town, because it abacks the town property and the village property, and right now, the highway department uses the property to access all their things, in fact, they're using it all the time, which is fine, I don't care. So I approached them to buy it, they said they would, they wouldn't, they didn't know, you know, then they were like Curtis Heisman, the affordable housing guy, said yes, they want it. So after the first meeting, I met with Jacqueline, I spoke with Jacqueline, and she says, well, we couldn't purchase the property with a house on it, she's like, it would have to be subdivided first, and then we could, we can move forward with the purchase if they deemed, so apparently, they looked at it, they were doing an appraisal, I reached out to her last week, happy to sell it to them, they can make a park out of it. If, by the time this gets done, and nobody does anything, then yes, my plan is to run a hedge down the middle to separate it and landscape the properties, and either sell the lots or develop them. I mean, it, the issue is, for me, it's a big lot in an area where there's a bunch of smaller ranches and capes and houses, so I think to maximize the land use would be to just sell it. Like, because I don't think it makes sense to put a five thousand square foot house on an acre surrounded by capes and ranches that are, you know, on Dale Street, some of them are falling down. And I think it's a good area. It's right in the village. Walk to town. But, yeah, my interest was just to sell them off.
So you, I just wanted to know why you owned it.
Yeah, that's the whole piece. And I've already landscaped the house. I don't know if you've seen the little house that's up at one oh five Willow.
Uh, you know, I've seen it, yeah.
So what did you think of that?
Well, I'm not saying it's not nice. It's beautiful. It it, it's really, uh, does the neighborhood well. I just want to know, like, behind my house. That's what I'm worried about. Because I had a lot of privacy and I didn't have to worry about anything. And now all of a sudden, I just got this letter. I had no idea what was going on until I got this letter.
Which house is yours?
Which house is yours?
It's 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 labeled on your map. Let's see, it's number forty-seven Willow Street. It's the the northernmost adjoining lot.
The Eileen.
Fogarty.
Fogarty? That's you? Bogarty, okay.
What way up there?
Yep, so so adjoining that lot, if this were built out, would would be.
Sure you that I'm gonna be more concerned about hedging that whole line out. I've already on my plan, there's already hedges going up along that fence. And I would continue putting Leland Cypress or Green Giants or some type of, you know, thing. Because I'd like, if I do wind up developing it, I would like to make it look like a little mini kind of Southampton Village estate essentially, but with a smaller version of First Neck.
So that mound of wood chips that are there, those are your chips?
Those are mine, yeah. And actually, I've seen.
What I'm looking at now currently, so.
Well, it it's funny because I didn't have that many chips there. I've now, I had one pile put there and now the landscapers are throwing chips on the pile. That's not.
It's nice that neighbors can meet each other this way. We're like facilitating.
Long short of it, I'm looking at like a mound of wood chips from many, many trees that were cut down that I listened to being, you know.
Well, what? Again, I've I've, since I'm at the house.
I just want to know, like, if that's okay.
No, I mean, those wood chips, like I said, it was one pile. Now it's turned into a mound. I don't know who put them there. And I keep, I was thinking about putting a a chain or something across there, but the highway department uses that, that area, so.
Are you planning on, they're just gonna stay there, you think?
The wood chips? No, I could spread them out into the lot. I mean, whatever hap, like, those wood chips are are kind of valuable because they're basically, it's a mulch pile. But I mean, I could move it into the, into the middle wherever one of the lots. I mean, because there's gonna, if if and when I develop it, I mean, though, all that shrubbery and stuff is gonna get taken out and dumped.
Okay. Well, well, this is eye-opening, so thank you for sharing. And hopefully the wood chips will.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Thank you. Any any other, anyone else on Zoom, any other public comment on this? Motion to close the public hearing? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any days?
Great. Janine, do you have what you need to prepare a draft decision in this case?
Sketch plan approval.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have the notice with the filing.
Oh, yeah, you can give that to Janine.
Yeah.
Thank you. I should have asked for that.
I took a picture of it. Just take it. Take the whole thing. You can have it.
Okay, next, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is fifty-four Main for the public hearing. I'm recused, so I'm gonna step out. This is your ethics thing. Hannah, that's for Hannah's.
Good evening, board members. Liz Vale, Greenberg, Trower, twenty-three seventeen Montalk Highway Bridge Hampton. I'm here tonight for hopefully the final appearance, final conditional approval of public hearing. This is a proposed minor two-lot subdivision of fifty-four North Main Street. It's comprised of one point six seven acres or seventy-two thousand seven hundred and forty square feet. We're in the R twenty in the front and the R seven point five zoning dispart in the back. This is a reduced density, uh, two-lot minor subdivision. And, um, as I said, we've been here many times. We started this process back in twenty twenty. And, um, we've gotten our requisite ZBA approval. And we're hoping, um, for final conditional approval tonight.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Again.
Again, thank you.
And we, I I was told tonight that the minutes say that I voted against it last week.
Oh, no, you voted for it.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
The minutes showed that I.
Oh, really?
It was a nay. I was in favor of it. I just, I, it was probably interpreted as a nay because I gave a gratuitous, off the, under the record observation to the applicant that they pull their socks up and do two houses instead of one.
Right.
And deal with the ancient structure in the front.
Right.
Which is the, it no longer, shall we say, in keeping with that stretch of, uh, North, uh, Main Street. And apparently that was viewed as, that gratuitous comment was viewed as a negative, but I did vote in favor.
I was here and I remember your vote in favor, so thank you for voting in favor.
Thank you. I will report that to the absentee member of the planning board who read it and said, gee, I voted against it. So, um, counsel, we.
I've submitted a proposed, um, decision.
And we vote to approve it.
You had voted to approve it pending the public hearing, which we now have, unless you have somebody who wants to speak out.
Okay, speaker, please.
Anyone on Zoom?
To deal with.
I should know for the record, we did have written, um, we did have written submissions, letters in favor. Um, and John Bennett, before he left, he's a neighbor, so he was noticed for this. He said that he was in favor.
He knows that's a lot, a lot.
Yeah.
No one on Zoom?
Nothing on Zoom?
Okay.
Okay. No record of.
You can close the hearing and vote.
Close the hearing?
Second motion.
Okay, seconded? All the ayes? No negatives? It's it's approved? Do we then request you to give us the application? I think you'll sign the, you'll get me the application. I signed it for the.
Yes.
For as acting.
Correct.
Fellow of the chair.
Yeah.
Please, thank you.
So you just need to make that motion.
Yeah, they did. They'll sign it.
To to approve the decision as written.
Secondly, I make the motion that we approve the application? Seconded, seconded too?
Second motion.
Okay. Any negatives? The ayes have it.
Thank you so much for your patience, board members.
Thank you, dear nurse.
Hopefully I won't come back next week.
Tell the youngest Carl to change his mind.
Thank you. We'll definitely take your, uh, opinion under advisement. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Thank you. They don't care.
Okay.
It's it's not even rounding error.
Yeah.
Hope he didn't go home.
Not, it's not the limit, it's just a, I think that's the minimum. I mean, could. Well, it's going to, right now, the board closed the hearing for the lot line amendment. It's creating those four lots, the three building lots and the one alleyway lot. The those, right, those four lots with those dimensions. You could, I mean, if they could propose something different there, I don't know if they would, if they would allow to require that.
That's it?
Yeah.
So this meeting was short as compared to the last one?
Yeah.
That one, twelve, that's nine o'clock, the last one. Yeah, I'm sure. I'll eat dinner before I come.
Maybe in the day, so I just, Katie just moves it to about three or three thirty and so.
Yeah, the building could be on the line. There's no requirement that they provide any alleyway.
Almost every day.
They're gonna come. They're gonna come in for site plan review and.
Okay, good. I also, and she said, I did vote for it. That was, oh, good, okay, great. I almost said, I hope the youngest girl changes his mind and builds a second house. On the lot, you mean, off the lot? Oh, yeah. Come on. Let's wrap this up. What do we have minutes? Are you flying?
Well, because they're gonna have to apply for site plan review. But then they'll, they're not gonna have to change a lot. And then they can propose to do, build the building. So you could talk about building setbacks, you know.
And I'll be back.
Okay, I I think we're gonna.
I'll be back for the season on the seventeenth, so.
Oh, good.
I'm here for the nineteenth.
I I think we're gonna cancel.
That's fine.
The mayor and two trustees, May nineteenth, that was June. Can we, um, can we finish the meeting?
Oh, yeah, okay.
I move, I move, I move we adjourn the meeting.
Before we do that.
All right, we, um, we already adjourned, uh, Fowler Farm, so we're good there. Alex on the Conomera. Do we have to do anything? That's already scheduled on June second.
Yep, so no, we're gonna, we're gonna have a public hearing on, uh, on that, beginning on June second.
Eight sixty-five Merrick. We need to adjourn that, right?
Uh, yes, the applicant has requested an adjournment. There should be a letter in the file.
Okay, so motion to adjourn eight sixty-five Merrick to, uh, the June second meeting. Second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Brian Kelly, we're gonna adjourn that to June second as well, so.
I believe he's requested an adjournment to to May nineteenth, unless the board is not unable.
Requested that one, but we're we're gonna adjourn it to June second. So a motion to adjourn the Brian Kelly application to June second. Second, thank you, Alan. All in favor?
Yep.
Aye, opposed? Okay. And, um, and then seventy-four White Street? This is, we're just gonna adjourn this to the second, too.
It's waiting for the hearing.
Yeah, so motion to adjourn seventy-four White Street to June second? Uh, it's all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Everybody, I want a motion to approve the minutes for April seventh. I think everybody's had time. So motion to approve those minutes? Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. We're gonna cancel the May nineteenth meeting, so our next scheduled meeting will be June second. Okay? So. Uh, we're up to let them know. Because it didn't, it seemed like they were having.
He was reluctant to get it done.
He wasn't sure he was gonna get it done by then anyway. Okay. So he just got some extra time.
So the next meetings will be June second and June sixteenth.
Tell the, tell the tower they've got a new question.
Okay. We'll let them know.
Do you want to talk about that in a public forum? Well, so, Janine, we have a legal question we want to discuss here, uh, in this forum. With respect to the lot line modification of the Jobbs Lane application, the code says five feet. We've had a lot of letters that have requested a wider alleyway from the Jobbs Lane to that back parking lot. If code says five.
Well, I think the minimum is five. I don't know that it's ever been any wider, especially in the village where you have limited space. I'll take a look at the code. I wrote the section down. I'll just reread it in the sketch plan and then I'll report back.
My concern is because we didn't discuss it and like, and there were several letters that stated that was narrow when you think about the amount of parking and the amount of people passing, that perhaps it could be considered.
It might be, but then you'd have the lots being much smaller, right?
But is it a matter of, but.
Yeah, sorry, Amanda, go ahead.
Is it a matter of zoning code that all that is required is five feet?
I'll research it for sure. I wrote the section down.
And brief us on that because.
As far as I know, I don't know, but know if you have other precedent in the village to have it any wider than five feet.
So you could prepare something?
But I just don't know.
That would be a system. There's a lot of letters interested in that.
Alan had something to say.
I can share my history on this. I won't share it all. It's weird. This five feet, this, uh, access grew out of the notion that it had become a public space. And it was a public space because in the south west corner, there was a gate that could be opened. And it wasn't open all the time, but it could be opened to go into that space and get access to the parking lot. And when the application came up, it was, everything was gonna merge. It was gonna be much deeper. There were all sorts of other issues. A couple of, uh, lot lines, I'm gonna say east of it, further up, uh, is a major access to that parking lot. It's a, it's, there's shops on it and it's a, it's a real access. It's a major deal. And the notion that there's even supposed to be an access at all, there's plenty of access, comes from the architect who now is in charge of the reconstruction, who for ten years was the head and leader of the planning board, a whole ancient plan, ten years ago.
The village planning.
The village planning board. The semi semiatic, he was the leader of it. He came and testified, which he denies to me, I beat him up on. He came and testified in favor of the immediate, uh, lot just up the hill because it was gonna go right to the edge of the Medonia's place. And they had bought Caldwell Alexander's shop where he lived above it. It was an ancient house. And it's probably historic because it's a remaining house. And it was a big fight. They said it's gonna ruin their lot. In fact, they were actively with brokers trying to sell the lot because their mother had gotten ill. Their father was a doctor in, I think, in, uh, in Nassau County. They were leaving their house to the girls down on, down on Meadow Lane and moving to Florida. It was a complicated period, this, say, six years ago. It was a complicated application. They organized a huge, uh, application of, I think it was a, over a, uh, I had forgotten maybe a hundred and twenty-five petition, people signing it to say, you have to preserve this, at least make it a restaurant.
You have to preserve the courtyard.
Preserve the, and make it a restaurant. It'd be commercial, it's a wonderful restaurant. People love to go in. The traffic was, in fact, near zero. There were sixteen restaurants at that point in the village. Probably a one or two more. And it was a complicated civic organizations. It was a big issue in terms of the building being, uh, it was gonna be a single building with two shops that was five feet bigger than the planning board, one old planning board of width. And it was about ten feet going further into the back court of the, of the, it's now a controversial parking lot. It's rarely used. It's now gotten to be a political issue for the next election because there's, they're, uh, constructed some stuff in that back parking lot to do solar power. Big issue, they're making an issue on the mayor, next mayor's election. The polit, local politics are galvanizing around this for all sorts of issues that are related. It's always related. In a municipality, everybody talks to everybody. And so these, it it's, it's complex for extra reasons. The reason I asked for the history. The reason I asked for the history was, this was built by accident, and it was an economic failure period. The man behind it is, I think, a substantial retailer in Sag Harbor. He knows the business cold. He's been trying to change it to make it at least commercial, get stores in there.
The current owner.
Current owner.
Yeah.
Original owner, guy who redeveloped when they tore the, the house down. And so it, it was an excellent tear down. It was an ancient house that was stuck, and it was doing the best of it.
It sounds like from the letters, people who support the, the new owner but are asking for a wider alleyway to the parking, and I just wondered if that was negated by law?
The architect who put the law in for the five feet is now is representing the builder, new architect, whole new planning.
But is there a matter of the zoning or anything to, to limit that ability?
No, not limit it. If, if it needs to be there, it has to be at least, it's sort of the double negative. It's like Nixon.
The minimum is five feet.
Yes, the minimum.
If you do it, it's five, with the herricks next to the little shop on the back of that little lot, five feet.
So, Janine, if, if the code requires a minimum of five, and ADA access is, is, you can check that box, because it's wide enough. What basis does an agency like the planning board have to ask for a wider one and survive a challenge?
Yep, letters.
We just like, I like to answer the constituents' questions.
It's not historic, it's just a lot of letters.
So the, because the other thing I would add, Janine, and I encourage everyone on the board to do this, because I did it, was start at the Golden Pear up here, walk down South Main, take a rail jobs. There, you'd be surprised how many little alleyways there are, that you just never noticed until something like this comes up. And they're anywhere from barely five feet wide. Some looked a little narrower than that. It was pouring out today, so I didn't get out of measure. But, so some were five, there were a number of comps at five feet, and there were larger ones, too. So it's all over the map. So there is not a strong historical precedent or comparable to, to make base a decision on.
But I felt the discussion was cut short because it was a definite no. That was the sense I got, and I wanted to understand what that no was and why. And so if we could just have a little bit more support on what...
He was arguing, Joe always makes every argument that he can, even if it's not relevant, because he loves it.
But we moved quickly.
He, no, no, no.
So, I'm just saying.
He said no, because he will make the argument when it comes to the plans, that if you take more space, we're cutting into the commercial application of, period.
I understand. I understand that. I wondered what the, like, the zoning was.
He will make a constitutional argument.
Yeah, and it's also important to notice that on the other side of the antique store there, that Alan was referencing, there is a very wide access alleyway from Jobbs Lane to that parking lot. Very wide. So just, like, on the other side of the building, you gotta, you have access.
But had there been some prior discussion, some reason we didn't discuss it or we didn't address the letters? You mentioned we had letters, but, because nobody stood up.
They are not legally relative to combining the properties.
She was here and then she left prior to her, she was a document.
It was, it was, it was all relevant to the site plan, not to just combining the property. We were approving this, it's getting to one property. The two main points of the prior plan were, which for us, for, our board is in charge of stuff that's commercial, are making sure there's access to all these parking lots. And secondly, doing housing upstairs. The major thing was to put, and the last time this happened, the mayor was even about to make, three mayors ago, make a motion that the village put in plumbing for putting apartments above, not offices. I mean, this is, this is, development of the village is housing.
Thank you for clarifying, because I just melted one quickly.
Is your concern that ability to argue for the 10-foot wide alleyway was, is lost, and it's only raised when you have the lot line amendment otherwise?
Yes, I thought perhaps this was the one and only one so quickly. We didn't have a chance to discuss it.
He didn't agree to five feet. He just says, get the lots, and then he'll do it. And then he said, he threw in the thing that...
So you're saying this might be revisited?
Oh.
And we'll have another opportunity if people, I'm not saying the owner will want to, but...
It's almost 50%, there'll be no lot, no, no access. He doesn't have to, he has to do it in the plan. It's gonna, Amanda, it's coming up, he has to do it.
Okay, I just didn't, I wanted to, you know...
He was fudging it as to whether it's an easement or a gift. He would have the right to...
I think that the plan that we saw the last time around has the five-foot walkway.
Well, he came in saying, we didn't even have to do that. We did it, but we had, I have a list as long of people calling about wanting wider, because it's an opportunity. And I just wanted some discussion. I didn't understand that the window was closing or not. So it sounds like it's not completely, okay.
It's not closed at all.
When you approve a sketch plan, you're just approving a plan to be considered, the lot line amendment.
It's not the final.
No, it's not, it's not.
It's not final. It's just you're willing to consider the plan. It's, you know, you, you think it's a good idea at this point.
If they, if they get active, it's all gonna come back like it did before. That's why I gave it all, it's, it's...
I just didn't understand if it was a done deal without having lots, thank you. It sounds like it's not, and whether it ends at five, and that's it.
It's not happening, so I should have been here tonight. I thought, it's important that I should have been here.
Well, there are like 20 letters from their constituents. Did you see the packet? As long as it's premature. I'm just saying, I didn't know if that was premature. She said, you thought by zoning was done, and I just wanted to be sure if it was, that I knew why, so, thank you.
The Saffy Association, this is progress, because they are, they're arguing the historic relevance of the whole, of the Jobbs Lane.
Those buildings were not, obviously, that they were, but...
They don't care. Just the historic nature of Jobbs Lane.
Did you, you know, the other argument that was beginning to be espoused was this development in the context of the comprehensive master plan. That argument is lost on me also, because I don't see where the comprehensive master plan really...
It's the old one.
I'll have to go back and look at the, the comprehensive master plan and see if it offers any guidance about the site plan here, when they make that site plan application.
Yeah, I read it and I didn't, but can you double check and see what your opinion is?
Because if we get a sewer, it's housing over.
Well, I think they're conservative. The facades look like smaller buildings.
But that's an ARB issue, and it, and it's not really referenced in the comprehensive master...
I think keeping the nature of the village, and it's big, but I think that's, that we, that is a goal.
Yeah, but we, I mean, we haven't seen officially any elevation, so...
Except we did see one, I think, one roof and three, but some were saying, you know, setbacks, whatever.
So, but he is under no obligation to provide that alleyway, right? And is actually, you know, I think if the plan is to divide those and sell them off, you know, it's actually, you know, he's giving, it's a big gift.
I think I go to, so to speak.
Square footage, you could sell otherwise, right? So, anyway. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, yeah, no, thank you.
There's no one waiting on Zoom? We're, we're good, right?
And I think that was everything else on the agenda.
I think we got everything, right?
Yep, so we'll plan to meet again on June 2nd.
All right.
2nd.
So if there's no other business, motion to close the meeting? Thank you, Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.